Order. Pledge of allegiance. All right, I'm just gonna confirm once again, has everybody signed in, anyone that needs to sign in yet? Okay, hopefully, everybody grabbed a handout that will have useful information as to how the meeting will be run. Number three. Minute approval, the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three annual town meeting, it's in your packet that's been provided at the door. We need a motion. What's that? We need a motion to approve. So one thing I guess I would consider is if you look at the meeting minutes, it says. Trigger Rhodesia, I don't know if you want to. Motion to approve with changing the name to Trigby Rude.
Could be nice.
Yeah, okay, so there is a motion to approve the April eighteenth minutes with the correction of Trigby Rude, and is there a second? Wendell Johnson, second, all those in favor, I, any opposed? And then the November twenty-first special town meeting, needing a minutes, need a motion to approve. Luanne Siles gave a motion. And a second. Who's I, I can't, okay, you can see, okay, all those in favor, I, any opposed? All right, part of the state statutes is that we have to provide a financial review, so you can see that in your packet as well, that is the profit and loss for twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions?
So from what I see, so what it does, and I don't know why it's a program does it, is if you see total R and C R contracted roads, it added the two twenty-seven, two sixty-three, sixty, plus the one twelve seventeen, it did not include the top, but the top, excuse me, the top will be included in the total overall road. So I don't know why embrace like that. No, it's not, it's not that, that five, two, seven, eight is not part of the total R M C R. That's the one bad thing about using letters, next year you'll see that we will have all these numerically done instead of letters, so that it flows better, accounting does not take letters very well. So that is one of the issues that we have right now, because letters are kind of hard, so right now, it says it's just total, what you told me it said the number didn't look right, you know, it did hide the ten thousand six hundred twenty-two and the seventy-one thousand, but it's total R M C R, so all it did was take the R M C R and the R M S K, which was a subgroup of R R M C R. But then under the total five, three, three, one, one point two, then it took and added everything.
So just to be clear, what I'm hearing you say is there was question about the R M C R contracted roads and the R M S A upgrade and paving? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
And then those two amounts equal your R M, the total R M C R contracted roads, that falls in there, but the entire amount falls into your road maintenance, the five, three, three, one, one point two.
Well, the entire amount probably falls under transportation total.
Or total, total is the transportation, right?
I know, I didn't set this up, this was all set up by the previous accountant. I can see if I can move it. I'll try. Yep, I'll try to move it, but yeah.
But ultimately, it falls into the right category.
Correct, it's still under transportation.
Right. Any other?
On this currently regarding this whole responsibility, in looking at the numbers of last year versus the budget, the income, which I understand there's in grants, different forms of income that you can't guarantee, so there's two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. There's something like him, that has not been a budget reflected in the, except against the bottom line numbers. So two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, there is no income, plus an additional one hundred and eighty thousand dollars over budget in expenses.
We were not over budget, we actually ended up with a surplus this year.
Four thousand dollars. But if that hundred and eighty thousand dollars hadn't been spent, as it would have not planned to be spent, the bottom line would have been an additional hundred or two hundred thousand dollars. I just don't think that the dollars are being managed and we got to.
And we actually do look at it every single month. And this is something that we will be doing, what did we talk about, June, we're going to look at it in June and compare and see if we need to make any adjustments.
What is the hundred and thirty thousand?
Look at the total expenses. Or the total expense on it.
Oh.
The one, the additional income which helps to cover, which they have. It's gonna be making more money, I think, if this was.
We're not supposed to make money, though. Government, okay, okay, I'm not gonna argue with you.
Yeah, I understand what I said, but how you do things for your community, whether that roads or parks or education or whatever, take that later. Take that, hello. Maybe you can't do that, and there's not a lot of people who come from Texas or from, from grants combined. Which is, I don't see your language being there in problem, and that's, that's my opinion.
Duly noted, any other comment on the budget? All right. So next, the next annual town meeting will be Tuesday, April fifteenth of twenty twenty-five, that's the third Tuesday. Number six, discussion and potential action on matters of interest to town electors, so we will be following parliamentary procedure. Supervisors are also able to make in second a motion, I am not. Town electors are able to make in second a motion, and then discussion will ensue after that. So is there anyone wanting to make a motion? Honey? This is the part where you get to make a motion.
If I could walk on the chair?
No, I'm asking you for your motion. Okay, you need to make a blanket motion, what is your motion?
I wanna make a motion.
Is there a second? Okay, go ahead and discuss.
As may be amended from time to time, section two dash two zero two of the town's ordinance, as may be amended from time to time, trust we at lawful direction of the town board. B, town clerk is expected to accept it to assist and support accountable business in their duty and to encourage citizens' participation in town government. I have been informed by Ms. Ogden herself that there are no state or tourist edmit and desperation requirements or training for a town clerk. Sorry, my mistake. The two hundred and fifty-three minutes of training, the W clerk, how many ones training, the W clerk, they purchase themselves and are framed. Every collection month, the court receives five hundred dollars. Top it off with a three thousand dollar one-time retention bonus for successful execution of a three-year badge. I obtained video material that could control a form dating quick inside the T O P office. The current clerk is present and engaging with others, at no time does she step in and clearly remind the group that they are ready to date staff. I hope for a fact that when Clarence looked at the clerk, he did not allow forms on his watchful eyes. Clarence was in the text and shut it down immediately. Perhaps if the clerk had gotten some training, she would know how to follow the statute's best course. And this is only one indication, how many go unknown. Where yourself, you can use the clerk's, state meaning, clerk's or training, and guys teach, class can be heard about. This class can be taken online, blah, 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 wrong, it says. I asked you how these lectures meetings can both for the T O P clerks' positions have a low leverage. The first thing he's done is the first, the first thing he's told is not the first person in the T O P more than the other right.
Okay, that's not the way this goes, so is there, okay, that is not the way this goes. So first of all, you will be recognized, is there anybody else who would like to speak, Mimi?
The same thing came out a year ago about the clerk being elected, and Clarence Polo made it very clear that this is a job, a two-year job, and you don't want this kind of a turnover every two years as they are learning the job. It sounds to me like there's people here who have an extra run, just doesn't sound like. And a clerk's job, I Googled what they all entail, and it's not just what he said, it entails a hell of a lot of more information and things to do besides what, what, what you just said. I think it's a bad idea, it's an appointed position, most towns are assigned, have them appointed, bigger cities might have elections, but, so I'm very much against it. I would love.
Okay, you are not recognized, you have spoken, we will follow the rules. Thank you. I'm not warning you again, Betsy.
Spirit is not there, so how do you know the statute is pointing lower orders, how do you know that if you're not receiving new training? I mean, anybody has to receive training for a new job, so how is that? I, I don't understand that, how that benefits her, her.
Are, are you done? Okay, um, do you want to address the training portion? She can address the concern, and this is my meeting. I am the chairperson, I am the, okay. I am the chairperson of this meeting, and I will keep order, or you will be asked to leave. Would you like to address, okay, Clarence, would you like to address the training portion?
There's a lot of training that's both on to do. Uh, typically down the return, some trading, but going to an elected clerk to them is not gonna bear the need of training, but the only need to be training could be elected clerk, becomes about Larry. So, Kim was new in the job, and she's learning, and I know she's done some online courses, she's done all of her direction courses that are required for an election, which is constantly ongoing by the way. So there is gonna be, so by the time you get somebody trained to do an election, just they, Denise knows about this, be elected, and then in two years, you have the election, you have the, you have the. And then there's people, and as far as help, the case is wide open for help, anything, he's, he's got the phone numbers, follow page, the same thing with the treasurer, you can follow down the department, maybe, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
And the Green Bay training, my understanding is in July, they offer it every July. Correct. Correct, okay. Jody, did you? Okay.
So, and I sent a copy to supervisors. So, I am a producer of train. I am disappointed that the. And allowing it for them, there's video. This, that, that is strong ground for the recall, which I would have no part. So, in my opinion, on how I feel, the boards did both very well before the recent.
Are you done? Okay, Cindy?
I'm just for these four, I mean, or this board, or.
But. He's right, he's, he's got his own, when he's on your, good, you have. How, or, you can tell everybody, you know, what, yes. Happen. So, oh. So, you can't find her, you know, on, 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 you know, you know, you know, you know, you know.
All right, Kayla, I will allow you to speak.
I don't want to.
Do you want to address the training?
The only training that is required through the state of Wisconsin, I will address Connie specifically, she asked, when you do a records request, as part of clerk training that I've learned, you have to be specific on what you're asking for, you don't come in asking for a blanket of information. I want X, Y, Z, it's I want X, and I want Y, and I want Z. So you ask me for my Wisconsin certifications. There are not required clerk Wisconsin certifications, you can ask Clarence, Kathy Brant told you that when you were in, there are none. The state of Wisconsin does not require training for a clerk. There is election training, I have taken all of those, you did not ask me for election training? So I did not give you election training, you specifically wanted clerk Wisconsin certifications, there are none. Um, as far as Ms. Bauer going, I did not go to training. I did not go to training, number one, because at that point I had already told you I was not interested in being clerk for you. Number two, we did not get the scholarships. So yes, we were approved for taking that training, why would I take training to be a clerk? When I told you I did not want to be the clerk for that board? That doesn't matter.
Please do not.
Clerk training, it wasn't deputy clerk training, I'm not going to take clerk training when that's not my job, I wouldn't go to treasurer training, because it's not my job. So I didn't do that, and the state did not approve mine or Kelsey Lossit, who was the treasurer at the time, our scholarships. They always go to puny little towns, that's, they pretty much told me that, like, absolutely apply for it, I'm not gonna spend six hundred dollars to go to something for a training that's not mine, plus hotel, plus mileage, plus food, plus my hourly pay, not gonna do that, this doesn't make sense to take a training back for something that I wasn't being at that time.
And I will also interject that there is a certification for clerks, you can get that after taking this Green Bay training for three years. So should she take it this year, she'll have to take it another two years, and then will possibly be certified.
But also not required.
Correct.
So run through the state.
I will also address the quorum, this board is very active at the town hall. Any Tuesday, Thursday that I am not working, I am here, I was here last evening. It is common that more than one, a quorum of board members will be here, there is never work being done together. There is never um, town business being conducted together, I'm doing my thing, Clarence might be doing his thing, he might pop in to ask a question and whatnot, so that's addressing the forum.
And, and you could ask the current board, if you so wish, how many times I kick them out? It happens very often, I'm not afraid to do it, Jody has done it, if there's three of them around, they're not talking town business, can tell you that.
All right.
Yes, and that's fine, how many years do you work on your board?
Two years.
Any, any, I need, so I, I recognize Denise, however, hold on, is there anyone else who has not spoken that would like to speak? Anyone else who has not spoken? Anyone else who has not spoken? Denise?
Yes, um, you had mentioned the forum topic.
So this is how, this is not related, currently, the commu, the conversation is surrounding her being a. Further conversation.
So, the motion is to, um, do the clerk, what about treasurer?
Well, if someone wants to make that motion, then they'll. So the motion at hand is to change the clerk's position to an elected position. I'm going to call for a vote, um, do you want to, can you go grab the sheets? Oh, you have them, yeah, never mind. So all of those in favor of making the clerk position an elected position, please raise your hand. I'm gonna ask you to stand and raise your hand, just so I make sure I catch everybody, so we've got two, three. Okay, three, four, five, maybe that was harder. Okay, how many do we have, how many people, okay, that did not pass. What's that? Uh, the people not raising their hands are opposed. Is there anybody here who abstains from voting, please raise your hand. Thank you, all right, um, any other motions? Denise? Okay, can you be more specific as to the amount of the increase? Okay, so there is a motion to, are, are you saying the annual, per year? So there's a motion to add two thousand dollars per year for elected official, is there a second? Uh, Denise, if you want to start the discussion?
I feel, we have both. Not, um, I feel the, the fee increase is the voters decide that they wish to take that direction, would not affect until twenty twenty-four, and it would only affect three seats for twenty twenty-five, it would only affect. The. Eighteen three, would have, it's. I have. Now, the seventy-fourth round, eighteen, two, work, and three years, and I'm always trying to think. I also, trying to, because. I would not. You. So, for this year, I would always keep the full lines for some board, and I figured, and.
Anybody else who wants to speak toward the motion?
I have an opinion necessarily about the amount, but the fact that I feel that the supervisors don't do this job for the money. Five thousand, seven thousand. I think that the motivation should be more of a loyalty and a caring about the community. And I don't know if two thousand dollars make a difference or bring in younger people with other things that they do. A lot of young people aren't involved in government at all. Just an opinion.
Anybody else? I saw someone over here, Julie. Anyone else? Um, Gori will go with you first. Sarah? Anyone else want to speak? Connie?
Yeah, I. Yeah, nobody wants to do with details. Nobody wants to work with personal.
All right, um, Steve.
They're paid like dollars. Also maybe twenty five dollars per. So their average per year is a thousand dollars, twelve hundred. So it's because they want it. Like fifteen years and it was fifty dollars before that, it's still fifty dollars. So.
Anyone else? Wendell? It cannot be changed. All right, I think we can bring this to a vote. The motion is to increase the pay for elected officials by two thousand dollars annually. All those in favor, let's try with raising the hands and see if we can do it without. All those in favor, raise your hand. Well, that's, that's already, that's a blanket statement, so that's the rule. Well, that, we can't say effective now because that would be against the rules. So the, the motion is that it would be increasing two thousand dollars annually for elected officials. All those in favor, raise your hand. Clarence, can you count? I don't have a good view. Fourteen. Any abstain? I abstain. And how many did we have total? Okay, motion fails. Any other motions to be made? Cindy? So this would be considered an advisory vote or an advisory, uh, motion? Uh, it would not be binding. It would be advisory only. Uh, motion is to do an audit for years two thousand nineteen to current. Okay, there's a second. Yep. Uh, Cindy, if you want to. I am going to interject one little piece of information for people. Uh, we did look into doing an audit for two thousand twenty four. And the cost to do one year was eleven thousand dollars. Any further communication? No.
I am in support of that one hundred and fifty percent.
Um, so just to clarify the requirement, if you have a shared clerk and treasurer position, then it is required. We do not have a shared clerk and treasurer position. Any further commentary? Mark?
Personally believe that the treasurer could be big favor, I know, just to make sure he's doing things right. She knows he's doing things right. Especially with the turnover of treasurers we had in the last person we were presented in state company.
So that's for one year, just to remember that was for one year. Right, but the quote was given for one year. And, and another quote was given for twenty thousand. Any further commentary? Anyone who has not spoken yet? Denise? Anyone else who has not spoken as of yet? Jody, do you want to address anything? No? Cindy? Connie?
You gotta have people make the space, the viewers make the space, for all these. I'll leave numbers around it every day.
I just want to give, who was last, who was the treasurer? Two or three people before Joey, and I know he did an outstanding job. For the other post, maybe one year, but I don't think we should pay for five or six years of audits. I don't want that, but you're asking.
It is.
That's six years, sixty six thousand dollars.
We don't know. We'd have to get a quote. Yep.
And it's only advisory, right?
It's only advisory, yep. Um, Julie, did you have something? All right, we will bring this to a vote. Uh, so the motion is to do audits from two thousand nineteen to current. All those in favor, raise your hand. Try it again. Uh, anybody who is abstains? And we had forty two, you said. So motion fails. Any other motions? It's great. And, and I do want to say that, um, you've been working, who, who is the individual that you've been working with to go through everything?
Kristi, uh, Yates, who just retired from the county. So she's been assisting me. We, um, just balanced out the two thousand twenty three year, so that has been completed.
And she's been very helpful in finding certain areas that were miscategorized or, or balancing out the two thousand twenty two and, and going back. So there has been a check, you know, that she's been working very closely with this individual who's been very helpful.
He's also the one that had said that we need to move to the numbers. That, um, counting is not letters, so. Yes, and next year's budget will be numbers.
Any other motions from the floor? Connie?
What currently is twenty five thousand, back to the five thousand.
Right. That's state statute. To do compet, yeah, that's state statute.
There used to be five thousand dollars. It used to be five thousand dollars. Then we went out and right away in April spent thirty one thousand dollars on shoulder work on Old Petigo Road. That was never quoted and never bid up.
That's a service. That's why. There was, there was, uh. That's, that's not a valid motion. You, you can't, you can't require that. So it is this, the state rules are that you have to go out for bids if it's over twenty five thousand. However, if it's a service, you don't. You don't even have to go out for quotes. You can just, if you know of somebody, that that's what you do. So we are following state statute, state rules. That's not a service. That is not a service. This was a required bid. That is a service. You're correct. We didn't go out for bids for Smithland. We, I have not. They don't have to. Yep. Any other motions from the floor? Oh, hold on. Hold on. Mike? So, so. So the, the motion is that he would like to authorize the town to, um, dispose of surplus equipment. Is that correct? Okay. Um, do you have anything else that you'd like to say to it? Okay. Okay, so. Okay, so I, I don't see a way to amend it to that, so, I mean, it would have to be publicly done. There are processes that we are governed by legalities, so, um, any further? Triggy?
I think it depends what it is, we've got, uh, we've got some old fans out there that are no longer using, we've got old dryer cabinets that we tried selling a couple of years ago on Wisconsin auction, nobody bought, so it's probably
Still there.
Sell be, if nobody wants it, you know, it's, it's, we got some old air packs, some old poles that no longer has those kinds of things, it's got holes in it. So, you know, if anything from fifty-dollar item, thermal imaging camera that was thirteen thousand dollars when we bought it fifteen years ago that burned out and no longer works, it's, it's junk down there. So it's like, some of it will go in a junk pile, you know, get salvage price for it, some of it we can put out on the Wisconsin surplus off. Some of it we can advertise on our website or Facebook or any place, whatever, so. Who would be determined, I'm not talking just the fire department, I think the town as well. I don't know if Keith has got, you know, stuff off his drive, there's, there's stuff later on.
Well, that's, that's why I asked the question because I agree, I'm sure there's stuff around where that should be a problem. But, you know, there has to be some oversight again, just to make sure that someone's, and I, I don't think anybody would have to do it, but to be above the board again, someone may find something that they know is not dumb, throw it in there and, and buy it. So there just has to be, so then it's like, well, I'm worried.
So, as far as the fire department, I would look to you to determine what surplus, you're the one who would.
If it no longer meets F A requirements, if it no longer meets safety standards, things like that, things are burned up, they're, they're no longer work.
Sure.
Um, we've given old air packs to, to other fire departments. You know, either sold or, or actually donated, so we've, in the past, years ago, we donated stuff down to Mexico. So, there's never one way.
Hmm. Um, I'm gonna, let's see.
I'm just wondering if those items are already, or are they on, will they down?
We have.
Mark?
In the past, one of the fire department's many years, um, in, in, like you said, it's a yearly thing, a yearly.
And, and I'm not opposed to having it come back to the board. Sure. Any further discussion? All right, so the motion is to allow the town, authorize the town board, town, a department heads through the process, uh, to dispose of, uh, surplus equipment. All those in favor? That is already a state statute.
It would be easier if it just said no.
Okay. Anybody, okay, let's start with anybody who is abstaining. And anybody who opposes. Passes unanimously. Any other motions from the floor?
I know it was a motion, but the old Petigo Road was so full of junk in the last three years, between Taco Bell.
So, I need a motion of what do you want?
Let's say more than that, somehow or another, we could, um, build that road, clean up all the garbage from, from Taco Bell and towns that was thrown from, I'm gonna say the old energy farm to the town hall. Dirty as farmers, uh, hard as last year. And it's just terrible, I mean, we try to pick up where we live, but you just don't drive. I don't know what you can do about it, I mean, you can set her place, but literally not realize.
So, a couple of things about that road, um, there is a section that has been adopted by the Outback. Yeah, um, we are still in April, um, I was considering trying to organize like a community event that we, you know, pick Old Petigo Road once to go out and clean it up, um, and then maybe pick another road. I. Right. So, um, we can, I, I, I don't know, if anybody has any other thoughts, by all means, um. I think this is more just kinda talking, cause I don't think there's.
Yeah, it's, it's not, I'm sure, uh, built that, for, for Roosevelt, you know, it ain't just be difficult, and shot, and all that, sure, you know, it's.
Right. You know, unfortunately, um, you know, if, if you see someone throw something out, write down their license plate, notify the county sheriff, I mean, I, I don't know what else to. And, and I will say that, you know, the, the adopt a highway program is still out there, so by all means, you know, help the community out and adopt a portion, so. Hmm, they only do so much, and they only do so much, and they're, they have to do it how many, what is it, twice a year?
And what is their, what is their?
I'm throwing out ideas, um, Jan Wilkie came in and asked me if she could do a citizen's arrest, I said, that's a discussion to have with the county sheriff, I don't know, call the sheriff and ask what your options are. That would be a possibility, I don't know. Okay. There you go. It was not a direct order from this seat.
So what would the road commission recommend? Who's on the road commission?
That's what they're saying here, there's limits to what you can do, you have one town employee.
You have one that's old, you have one that's.
All right. You just said basically what was already talked here, so, all right, moving on, any further motions from the floor? Candy?
Well, no way, either you, didn't you?
I was not, okay, I, I don't even, I don't even need to address this. But there was not a quorum last night at the supper club. Who is there? Please.
Um, I, it is four parties officially.
At one time?
I have. Daryl Joy.
Correct, so there was not a quorum, thank you. Okay, we are, we are moving on, any further? Any further? Steph? At midnight last night? Yep.
He wasn't.
Nope. He was not. So there was not a quorum. Is there a second? We've got many. Pick one. Anybody who abstains from adjournment? Anybody opposed to adjournment? Passes. All right. All right, um, Timmy, you wanna, should I call you Timmy, Tim, Mr. Bergerson? Mr. Bergerson, please come up and take your seat.
What do you want me to do, Tim?
We thought you were about to keep her open.
You sure you wanna do this, Tim?
All right, uh. Clerk Okens, can you please do a roll call?
Yeah. Supervisor Cobble.
Here.
Supervisor Warner.
Here.
Here.
Supervisor Bergerson.
Here.
Supervisor Joy.
Here.
I can verify, uh, public notice was done properly, um, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public comments, limited to fifteen minutes, um, agenda items only, please come to the front door, or, he's opening the door and I'm sorry, please come to the table, speak clearly into the microphone, start by stating name, address, and agenda items that are to be addressed. Anyone who wants to speak for public comment? Nice? To the front, to the table, please? And which agenda items are you addressing? Okay.
I would like, or discuss my. Raise or the, a three. And I'd like to thank you, cause I now get first by pick up and help, um, my duties and my. Um, my next, uh, agenda is, is the town surviving.
Wait, what was, what was the agenda item on the second one? Agenda item, the, on the agenda, which item are you addressing? Okay, you are out of order, please take your seat. Any further, um, public comment? Triggy?
For being a complaint, Nerdah, um, I just wanted.
I'm sorry, which agenda item are you on? Okay, sorry.
Mentioning capital improvement plan.
Okay.
Know exactly what you're gonna talk about, but I hope that the town really, um, refires up that capital improvement plan, so maybe, um, the town really needs to work long, and and you're gonna do that, cause with some kind of, maybe that's doing well, that continues to be next. And I will not comment on TPOS because it's been.
Any further public comment?
And it refers to board to think in the future about using and utilizing people in our town to enhance and upend experience and expertise and education. You can be sure that the people who would not wanting to improve for the town, uh, can hide it.
Any other public comment? All right, announcements, uh, the Bellin Health, Marinette Five Cave, uh, heart run and walk will be Saturday, April twenty-seventh, the fire department will be assisting with closing intersections, uh, for safety, that'll be on Roosevelt, including Raider University and Madison, closing from roughly seven fifty AM until around nine AM. The Marinette County Clean Sweep is, uh, going to be May tenth and eleventh, there are handouts available in the office. Uh, DNR updates have been uploaded to the website, um, there are no public meetings currently scheduled or planned. Uh, they state that they are always available and happy to speak with individuals, their email and phone numbers are included in the email, and again, that's uploaded to the website. Uh, they will continue to share updates, uh, with the monthly board meetings and quarterly updates are provided on their web, on their website. Uh, within the web, uh, within the updates, they just talked about, uh, what Tyco had provided to them, describes what the PWSA is, uh, the, the poet system still being offered, uh, and whatnot. And then also a letter that they, that DNR received from Tyco regarding the deep wells, um, and what they are stating is that the results in the memo support deep wells as a permanent drinking water solution in the PWSA, so we will wait to see what DNR's response is to that. Uh, Tyco JCI updates have also been uploaded to the website, they are, now have had a hundred and sixteen replacement wells requested, thirty-one installed, and additional installations are planned starting next week. We are still in litigation, so I have nothing to update there. Uh, nothing new on the EPA Superfund designation. Uh, the EPA recently announced, um, the new enforceable maximum contaminant level of four parts per trillion. Uh, the DNR DHS put out a statement in regards to that, and that is also up late, uploaded to our uh, website, the current enforceable standard of seventy parts per trillion in public drinking water will remain in effect until the DNR completes rulemaking, um, and this may take up to three years, and that's in their statement. Um. The one point, uh, six-six-seven million federal grant funds and UW Grant Writing Team, I just gained access to former supervisors' email folder regarding those items yesterday, so I will take the time to go through that, and then if I have any update at the next meeting, I will provide. Senate Bill three twelve was vetoed by Governor Evers, all of that information is also on the website. Uh, there was a class action settlement, uh, with Tyco. Again, that is on the website, um. They essentially, uh, achieved, achieved a seven-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar settlement with Tyco, uh, and this will impact public water systems, uh, this will not impact the town at this time. Um, also with SB three twelve, uh, the Joint Finance Committee, uh, was called into special session today by Governor Evers, and the finance committee did not show up, so there is a report that Evers may, uh, sue litigation against them for that. All right, that's all I have for announcements at this time, minute approval, uh. This is on pages ten through eleven in the board packet. Uh, for March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, can I get a motion to approve? All the, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Fire Department report age twelve in your packet, Mike?
People, very hard to report, um, since your last four meetings happened busy, we have thirty-one calls last meeting. Both of, over half of those calls were the three day period during, we're following the. Late winter storm that we have. Most of those were power lines down, trees, um, trees burning on power lines and whatnot. Um, our team worked through the night on, on that and then. In the aftermath of that storm, we've got a lot of folks in the town and in the surrounding communities, blood and generators. Um, we need to get word out to folks. Not on the centimeter meter of road next to your house to get several calls. Part of that side in the home. So we had mentally homes, uh, taken care of folks in several cases. Not in our town, but some folks didn't get, uh. Sent to the hospital in Toronto, it's pure carbon dioxide poisoning. Uh, we also did have one structure player, significant damage broke through the home in the, the town here. Um, directly related to the, to the storm. Um, other than that, um, the number of the US homes that we responded to and, uh, several. Authorized or by authority, bring in calls and, uh, fortunately with, uh. High degree of high priority, we've been having, you know, that's the one, the map department, so we're hoping that's gonna change play. Under training, um, last week, we did training on hydrant operations. Pump operations from our end, tank drafting, Z nozzles, using a map. Device. One of our firefighters, Justin Locke, completed state certified firefighter one training, asked for real train. His next step is to move on state certification testing that will become. Uh, available to him early next month. Um, we're still operating, require protection and education for preschool alarms for town residents. If you need, uh, if you do not have school alarm, we have very cool school alarms. Work through the clerk's office. Get a little less, we'll have some other through, some other install some alarm forty. Under fundraising and donations, we completed the fish fry fundraiser at Moose Lodge, many thanks to Moose Lodge, we netted over fifteen hundred dollars in. Donations through that event. And thank you to Wendell Thompson for his generous donation as well. Uh, with some of those funds, we weren't able to purchase four brand and water rescue comments with integrated headlamps using those. Um, under personnel, we have one new firefighter, female, Sienna Gray, she's a town resident. She's also a fire protection student, uh, in Foxdale Technical College. Um, she's been very active so far and we put her to work on it. Second, third, fourth. She's seeing what that's all about, uh, we did receive just recently two new applications, those applications are under review right now. We'll be doing some background checks and before. When we follow those. Earlier, our roster did twenty-one volunteers and we are certainly accepting applications.
Thank you. I do wanna, um, commend Mike and his team for all of the work during that, that time. Also, I want to recognize, um, Keith. For all of his work, um, countless hours. All night long. Uh, Kayla for her assistance, um. Providing food to the firefighters that were, um. Working so hard. And, you know, we opened up the town hall, uh, as a warming shelter. Uh, so thank you to, uh, Jimmer and Janice for assisting with that, Becca, the. Um, election inspector was here with her husband as well. Um, and it is very heartwarming when you see community members come together in times like that, so. I just don't want it to go unsaid, but thank you, um, it doesn't go unnoticed. Uh, the constable, uh, there is no report, building inspector, there were seven building permits granted for, that would be the month of March. Um, chief election inspector, I asked her to come and speak today because of the new Badger books that we had. Um, she was not able to attend because of her children's, uh. Meet or something, right? Um, but she did provide us, uh, prepare a statement that I'll have Kayla read.
Rebecca's a little. Long-winded compared to me, but I'm gonna read it, okay, bear with me. So Rebecca said, I wanna start off by thanking all the people that were part of our successful, safe and accurate election earlier this month. Thank you to Fire Chief Mike. And to Town Road Foreman Keith for their support and readiness on Election Day. Support like that is another reason why I am calm in any emergency situations. Like the one we had with the weather. One of the main reasons I can stay calm and confident when an emergency situation happens is the knowledge and training that I received from then clerk. Clarence Cobble. We discussed an emergency plan and he made sure I was well aware of safety measures, emergency protocols, and gave his advice on the contingency plan. I had put in place when I took on the chief election inspector position five years ago. I have never had to use it until this past election, but I am so glad that he told me there was an approximate ten second pause before the generator picked up. Um, it is little. Knowledgeable bits like that that made everything run smoothly. I also had a plan, even if the generator did not pick on, but with that, thank you, Clarence. Thank you to the town residential residents for coming to vote, their confidence in me, their feedback and acceptance of the new process of voting with Badger Books. Thank you to our election inspector team, they are all truly amazing, most of them came in and did extra training, so they were ready for a smooth and knowledgeable election with our new Badger Books. All of them stayed calm and ran a thorough and accurate election. Thank you to Clerk Okens for her support. You would never know this was her first official election as clerk, she did amazing and we can all be proud, we will see great things from her. Thank you to Deputy Clerk Kathy with her wealth of knowledge and support, which is unmatched. I utilized her knowledge a few times on Election Day and the days leading up to it, she made sure I had everything that I needed or anything I asked for. Thank you to our present and past town board for putting their trust in me, these past five years have been nothing but amazing and I look forward to many more years ahead. This election was our first one using our Badger Book system, I'm very excited about them, they worked amazing. Benefits from this new system are that town voters. Are now able to go to any table to check in, to change their name, change an address, or even register to vote right at the table. There is less correction or mistake. Um, for me to sort out, the system is very detailed on every step, check in is quicker, reduce stress on our election workers. As the voter number, ward, school district, and ballot style are all done and printed right by the back of book. Reconciliation time at the end of the night is cut in half or even more. Less stress and the test of my math skills. Battery backups on the tabulating machines work flawlessly. Some of our afternoon and closing election workers were able. Were asked if they would like to head home early and I was able to offer this because of the need. For elections, election workers has been reduced due to the Badger Book system. Everyone got home safely and I made sure that they checked in with me when they arrived home. I still was able to keep an odd number of elections, election workers for the law. Overall, the feedback was very positive, election workers and town voters embrace the new system. This is a change and something new. So we did have a few small pickups and adjusted properly, learning is the process of doing, we know what worked and what needs slight adjustment for the next election. Thank you again for putting your trust in me, I truly love my job, it isn't the job for everyone, but is the perfect one for me. Signed Rebecca. No, I think Rebecca covered a lot of things. Um, it was really great, I was the panicker when the power went out. I did know that there is a ten second delay before the generator kicked on, but that ten seconds felt like a lifetime when we had our very first, um. Election with electronic pole books, um, so that was a little scary when they all shut off, but Rebecca kept everybody calm and it went well, and yes, I agree, thank you to Mike and to Keith for. Giving our parking lot clean and brushing off our cars at the end of the night, very kind, very, very thoughtful. Um, but yeah. It went really well.
And I do wanna, you know, again, I want to say thank you to Kayla because. I think she was maybe beat up a little bit during the. Town meeting and I cannot stress enough. The knowledge that she has, you know, working with Clarence for two years. Um, and I wasn't here for the election because I was working, but when the power went out. She, I can, I could tell by her texts, a little bit of panic probably of the power just went out, you know, but, um. I do think she's a wealth of knowledge and I think that we are very lucky to have her and Becca. So.
It's the comment on that.
Yep.
The, the generator, by the way, that kicked in and saved the day and actually saved the whole rest of the week, we did have people come in and charge their phones and stuff here and warm up. When that was put in there was about eleven thousand dollars. And it was very controversial, what does the town need a generator for? Well, I think Election Day, we just found out what you needed the word.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It would've been a disaster without that generator trying to close out the election.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And now, you'd have been in here with. Lights from the fire department stretched in with cords off my generator and trucks.
Except for the fire department was at.
If they weren't out.
So they had their.
Yep. When we were here for the warming shelter, all of a sudden, everything went down and I'm like, what's going on, Kayla's like, don't worry. The fire departments, their, their doors must have just. Fire, the fire department's back, I'm like, okay.
On the warming shelter thing, I will add, um, too, that was, um, obviously, we've never done that before, I didn't know how many people would show up, if anybody would show up, but. Um, a handful of people did come and they did actually come even that Thursday, we opened up during office hours and. Not many people came, but the people that came really needed it, and so I was really thankful that we were able to have a space that they were able to do that with the heat, even though it's usually seven million degrees in here. Um, it felt great to them, so that was really awesome, but the ones that needed it literally like. Came in with jugs, jug, empty jug filled up with water. Um, we have an abundance of random snacks around here and so I put snacks out for them, we made some coffee in the other room and. Um, you have not seen the look of happiness on people's face until you give them a cup of coffee that they haven't had in two days because they don't have power. Um, and so it was just something really easy in the grand scheme of things for us to be able to provide. Um, but made a real, real huge impact on people, they were able to charge up their devices and contact their family, just letting them know they were okay, which was huge. Um, find a place that they could go and take a shower. Um, that you, just in this day and age, you don't realize all the things you can't do if you don't have power, so. So it was really, um, really a cool thing that we were able to offer that.
Thank you. All right, uh, Marinette County Board Report, we will get that from, uh, Dave Beekler, who is our new. Supervisor, board member, um, come up to the table, please. You'll get used to it.
Okay, the biggest thing on the board today, I guess, was, uh, UW's. Wanted to go back to committee.
Okay.
To get more information. Prevents getting prices of, uh. Use for. We're going to.
So no final decision made today? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, uh, number fifteen, page thirteen in your packet is the, uh, treasure report. Um, is anyone opposed to approving that? Then we will go by unanimous consent. Uh, supervisors have a copy of their, the bills, uh, to be approved. Can I get a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Number seventeen, the assessor contract, uh, so the renewal was due, end of. May. Um. So. I had attorney Spengender review the previous, um, contract and then when he did that, he sent me, uh, new one that he had recommended. Uh, so that was kind of changed up to remove things that didn't retain to the town. Um, I sent it to Tom McGuire. Uh, the pay is staying the same, essentially everything's staying the same. Uh, he has already actually signed it as of March. Twenty-fifth, so as long as the board agrees, then we can sign it and it will be official.
I make motion to approve the contract with the supervisor, three year contracts.
That's good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So I will contact Tom to let him know that we approved the contract and then I'm also going to ask him about the, uh. Board of Review, um, when he's gonna wanna do that. All right, uh, number eighteen, Plan Commission. Uh, so restructuring, I am going to take Supervisor three spot on the Plan Commission. Um, but we'll leave Supervisor Wharton continuing as chairperson. So you can boss me around.
Oh, good.
Is the, uh, is there any opposition to that? Anyone opposed to that? Okay, we'll go with unanimous consent. Number nineteen, Fire Commission Membership, uh, Karen Sylvester and Luann Siles are both willing to continue with their, uh, membership. It would continue their, uh, term through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Uh. Any opposition to that? Then we'll go with unanimous consent, they will be asked to take their oath within five days of notification. Board of Review Alternate Membership, uh, Michael Dobson, uh, expressed interest, um. So I don't know if we would ever need. The Board of Review Alternate, but I think it's important that we have. A list of individuals. So I would like to appoint him.
I think there's a, let me interrupt you, I think there is a. In our quota ordinances, I believe there's already some people appointed, you're just gonna have to update that whole form.
Correct, yep. Yep.
And there's what, two on it?
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna leave them all on there or?
I think at least one should meet, we can discuss it, um. I guess that's the other thing, you know, what, what do you do for a term, I, and my thought was as long as they're a resident or they opt to step down, so I will reach out to those other two. And see if they're wanting to stay on. Um. And then in my mind, they don't take an oath until if, unless they're needed. You know, because if they're, if they're called to it, then we would swear them in. So I would be adding. Michael Dobson and then I will reach out to the other two. Any opposition to that? Okay, then we'll do unanimous consent. Uh, ad hoc committee updates, the Capital Improvement Plan, I do agree very much with Trigby that we need to have this, um. So, uh, this is another folder, um, of Supervisor Fertens that we just gained access to yesterday. Uh, so we'll need to kind of go through that. Um. I know that the generator saved us, but I don't know how old that generator is, so. That's definitely something that may need to be looked at and I know there's been, um, issues with the town truck, so. Um. So I would like to appoint. Daryl as chairperson. And I will be vice chair. Um, and then I will reach out to Carl Green and Dale Moore, who are the contacts, to see if they're still willing to work with us on this. We will review the email folder and then figure out next steps from that point forward. Any opposition to that, Daryl, you can't say anything. Any opposition? All right, unanimous consent. Uh, CDBG, uh, so we had, since the last meeting, we had a meeting with the Department of Administration. The remodel project does not qualify for the CDBG grant because it does not impact the public. So that has been completely, um, scrapped. Unfortunately, somehow the DOA did not receive the bid specs. Right from the start to be able to give that input, so. With that being said. Um. The prod, the bid specs have been redone. As well as to try to. As well as to try to scale back to remove some things that aren't needed because we don't have that, that many funds available. They should be provided to the town and the contract, the two contractors tomorrow. And I already talked with both contractors to give them the time, you know, ask them to give us the date of completion. Once they are able, once they're awarded the project, because we may need to ask for an extension. And I also confirmed with them both that MSA would not be completing the grant paperwork on their behalf. So the bid spec should be provided tomorrow. Town Hall should be provided them as well. The due date will be Thursday, May second, at one-thirty PM for the bids to be provided to the town hall. Those will, once we get the bid specs, MSA is going to forward them on to DOA right away. So that if there's any concern that it would not be covered by the grant, we know right away. Rather than waiting through this process. So then they will be due, as I said, May second. Then I would like to propose that. Daryl, Clarence, and myself. Review those. I would be discussing with Integrity Engineering and Mark, who's the engineer developing it, and MSA. To determine which bid should be awarded. In order to keep this process moving forward. Now, if there's anything that's. Questionable, we would bring back to the full board. If the three of us cannot agree on it, it would come back to the full board. But I think that that would be the best process to continue to move this forward, is that the three of us make the decision. But again, if one of us disagrees, it comes back to the full board for discussion. What's that?
We'll just have to put a notice out when we're gonna do that, which is no big issue. Be twenty-four hour notice.
What do you do when there's, uh, status of shortfall?
So that's gonna be the other part of it. So in this process, once we get the amounts and we determine which one. We will also reach out to DOA. MSA will reach out to them, number one, for a timeline extension if we need it, which we likely will, and to see if there are additional funds. So. What I said was that we would be able to give the, award the bid no later than May twenty-third. So if we do need to bring it back to the board, we can do it at the May twenty-first meeting. And in that timeframe, we should know because DOA said it would only take them three to four days to say, is, are these amendments approved? So we should have all of that known. Now, if. We end up bringing it back to the board because we don't have enough money, whatever the case is. You know, then it might just get.
My understanding with the grant. We fund it and get rid of those.
Correct.
Do we have the cash to fund this or do we get rid of this?
You, I mean, you do have the money in your CDB. CD. There's also the LGI account capital outlay, not the full amount.
But we've got.
Once you get twenty thousand dollars and every twenty thousand dollars, I turn it in.
This is, you're talking, I'm just saying, use the last folks, four hundred some thousand dollars. If you do get the grant money for all of it. We still have to do the initial payment. And then collect the money back.
Right, but you do it in savings.
Right.
And you still have to, but once you get to.
Yeah, so like. Correct, so. Yes.
Yes.
Do you have the money someplace?
Yeah, we would have between capital outlay and RCD. And you could take the rolls.
Yeah, so I mean, and this was a conversation that I had with the two contractors as well, that it would be nice if they kind of build us somewhat as we go, not, not all of it at once. Yep. Yep. Yeah, so I, you know, as long as, I mean, I think it shouldn't be an issue.
Just want to be prepared for it and yourself, because you don't want to say going.
Correct.
Saying that, playing two hundred thousand dollars to use for.
Yeah.
The Gmail class, the state pays you back.
They're actually very good.
Yeah, we have turned in some, so they've actually.
Yep. So, you know, I've done it, I've turned it in and within a week or two, I've had to check.
Amazing.
So is there any opposition then that the three of us will make the decision and if we don't agree, then we bring it back? And it will be a noticed meeting? Yeah, yeah, unanimous consent. Ordinance Policy Review Committee, we had our first meeting on April eleventh. The process was kind of developed. Next meeting will be May ninth at nine AM. Any proposed changes will come back either to the board directly or initially to the Plan Commission for approval. And then back to the board. So it just kind of depends on what any changes are made. I'm also considering. A different process for our ordinances. So Munichode, who worked with setting our ordinances up. Have since joined with Civic Plus. Civic Plus is the one that we ended up paying almost nine thousand dollars to do the legal review and update the ordinance. So they updated the ordinances online, which is great, but then they provided a legal review that's going to require us to change some ordinances. So to do that again is kind of. Redundant. But it. Keeps cash flow coming their way, so. City of Marinette has their own just PDFs uploaded to the, their website. The county does as well and Kathy was kind of talking to me today on how theirs works, so. We might be looking at kind of changing that, but that's just in progress, just kind of an update, so. All right, number twenty-two, Buildings and Grounds. So for restructuring. I would like to continue with the current of Clarence being chair. Daryl being vice chair until the CDBG is done. At which time I would anticipate transitioning. Tim to take over for Daryl, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Award the contract for the fire department drain repair.
Okay, I can address that. Last board, we was given permission for Daryl and I to move forward. All three of the quotes that came in were under the twenty-five thousand, so no bid requirement.
Okay.
We're gonna meet with the low contractors, so that we can set up a timeline. And discuss the contract with them. We have, we have a quote from ninety-six hundred to twenty-five thousand, so. We need to make sure we're on the right page.
Sure.
And what's gonna get done, done, get done. And it's the ninety-six, that's it.
Okay.
We'll tell them to go forward. He's not gonna start till June first.
Okay. So you'll update us at the meeting.
At the May meeting, hopefully it works and make, if he gets done early, get in there and get it done and be all done.
Okay, very good.
I doubt that, but.
Well, that definitely would go better than our.
But the board gave us permission last time to move forward if it was under that, so Daryl, I'll have you speak with them and go forward.
Very good. Any other updates for Buildings and Grounds?
The other thing we got is the, the house toss roof is still. They said they have no problem waiting until we do what we're gonna do with the HVAC because they would love to see the roof. You know, done once, not be re-cut open and everything. So he said there's no cost increase. If there would be, he'd give us at least a ninety-day notice and then we could make up our mind. And I, didn't he say something about he, around the first of June, he was getting very busy, so he's kind of happy it's after to be after that. Yeah, and, yep. So he, but whenever it's ready to go, let him know and they're, they'll get it on.
And, and even backing up to the CDBG, you know, I said, I had them put on there, May twenty-third would be no later than May twenty-third awarding it. If we're able to come up with, you know, something prior to that, then we will definitely move it much quicker.
That would be simple enough.
Yep. All right, Recycling Center. First, I'm gonna ask if there are any updates from Clarence or Jimmer.
On the recycling center?
Yeah.
Bobby's back to work as needed. Paul's aware of that. I think he, he might have worked, or he's gonna work this Wednesday, I think. Or last week. So as far as I know, you know, there's, there's some grumbling about the cost increases out there, as we had mentioned. If it proves out that we can make that thing. Balance out, we will look at lowering the cost. Until then. Sorry. I keep some people saying they're switching to, to curb side pickup. Because it's cheaper. I don't know how that can be cheaper, but.
Well, and, and I, I'll weigh in that, you know, Scott and I talked about it. When we first moved here, we had waste management and for us, it's a convenience. Not having to put it out there the same day of the week. If we're gone camping for the week, now you miss that whole week, you know. We have it, we do it for the convenience of being able to go there Wednesday, Saturday, whatever works for us. So. Everybody certainly has the right to do whichever. I think we're gonna be able to burn. I hear rain. What's that? I, well, I just heard it now, you know.
That's why we're trying to get you moving there.
Yes, sir. Restructuring, so anything else?
No.
Okay. Restructuring, I am going to, I propose. That we have Tim Burrison as chairperson of Recycling Center. And Clarence as vice chairperson.
Welcome aboard, Tim.
See you later.
Every Wednesday and second and fourth Saturday.
Any opposition to that? All right, unanimous consent. Roads and ditches, I am not changing that. It will remain Chairperson Wortner and Vice Chairperson Joy. Any updates? Do you want to talk about the? Detour?
No.
Okay.
It's only for four days.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, right next regular board meeting is Tuesday, May twenty-first at six PM. Can I get a motion? Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?